This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, May 16th. Please stand for an invocation led by Dr. Eugenia Johnson Metropolitan AME Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge in memory of the loss of Commissioner Jerry Carl's mother.
Amen. Let us bow our heads together as we pray. Heavenly Father, we come in the blessed name of Jesus this morning, humbly submitted to your will. We thank you, Lord God, for this day and for all of the blessings and the mercies that have come with this day, for your mercies are new every morning and great is your faithfulness. We thank you, Lord God, for these leaders whom you have selected and appointed, oh God, anointed for such a time as this. We ask for your guidance in this meeting, Lord, that everything that we do, everything that we say, even the thoughts and intents of our hearts, will be to your glory. We thank you, Lord God, just for allowing us to be a part of what you are doing right here in Mobile and in the surrounding county. Now, God, be with us, for as your Son Jesus said, "Without you, we can do nothing." We bless your holy name today. In Jesus' name we pray and give thanks, and the people of God said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the moment of silent prayer for our colleague on the County Commission, Jerry Carl. His mother, Virginia, recently passed, so if you would, in your own way, a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
Roll call, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see a lot of you here. We have some special friends here from the Mobile Fire Department, so good to see you all here this morning. We have something coming up on our agenda very quickly that you will all be interested in, so thank you all for coming today. Our rules of our council are very simple. We just ask everyone to please turn off all of your electronic devices. If you come to the podium to speak, you will have five minutes. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, and that's your indication that it's time to begin wrapping up your comments. When you do come to the podium, please give us your name and address for the record. Across the country this week marks National Police Week, and just yesterday was Peace Officer Memorial Day, and then later on this week, there will be a memorial service out at Public Safety Memorial Park that we hope you all can make. And today, we would like to take a moment to remember the brave members of law enforcement who've given their lives in service to all of the citizens of Mobile and in this country. We'd also like to honor our members of law enforcement in general, and of course, we have a lot of our firefighters here today, and a few members of the Mobile Police Department as well, so thank you all for your service. You know, they leave their homes every day with no idea what their day will bring, and they have one of the toughest jobs out there. I think we can all agree to that. They deserve to know every day just how much we appreciate them and everything they do to keep us and our families and our city safe. So thank you from all of us and a grateful city. Some events coming up this week, the State of the City and County is tomorrow, 11:30 over at the Convention Center. That's an event where more than 900 people will be on hand to hear from the mayor, from the County Commission, and from the Chamber on what's happening in our city, what we've done in the past year, and what is coming in the future. So it's a great opportunity. I understand that more than 900 people will be there, so we hope to see you there as well. Also, later on this week, on Friday, we will be relocating our second police precinct over to a more centralized area for the precinct. Mr. Williams and Mrs. Rich can talk more about that, because we are all very excited to have this precinct relocated to make it easier for our officers to respond to their precinct in a much quicker fashion, so of course, that means much greater public safety for all of us. So thank you for that, and Chief Batiste, we look forward to seeing you there. Just a couple of other things coming up on our agenda today. I know we have a lot of people here who were interested in an appeal that we will be hearing. I just want to give you some information on how we will handle the appeal. The appellate will go first. We will allow four people on both sides, so four people who were here as part of the appeal will get their opportunity to come to the podium and speak, and then we will give it to the other side, which will be the applicant for four people to speak, and then there will be a rebuttal by the appellate. And that can be somebody who's already spoken, or it could be somebody else. So that's how we will handle the appeal today. If you signed in at the door to speak on this appeal, I would ask you to please get with the other members who are here to speak and decide who will do the talking today, so that there's no confusion when we get to that appeal. Something else that we're going to do, and you will hear Mr. Richardson, when we adopt the agenda, because we do have some special things on the agenda today, we are going to move some things around, so if you have a copy of the agenda, don't be confused. We are going to move a very special appointment to the top of our agenda. Following that, we will hear from people who are here to speak to us about non-agenda items during the presentations and petitions. We'll ask them to come down, and then we will proceed with the agenda as you have. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Lambert to move ahead.
Approval of minutes of May 9th. So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications for the mayor.
Good morning. Glad to see everybody here this morning, certainly grateful to see all the first responders here in support of our nominee to be the next fire chief of Mobile. It gives me a great pleasure, for those who maybe have not met him, to introduce to you Chief Mark Seeley. Proud of joining the MFRD. He served in Marine Recon Division as a sergeant. Over the last 25 years, he's served the citizens of Mobile, 22 of which were in the field with MFRD. He has progressed steadily through the ranks on three promotional exams that he has taken. He finished either first or second on all of them. He believes that every MFRD employee is a firefighter first, and in a few moments, I guess I will have an opportunity to hear a few words from Chief Seeley. The next item I'd like to point out is that I've introduced an ordinance on today's City Council agenda that will put more Mobile's Police Department officers on the street. The City Council has made the decision to send the, what we're calling the UNTCC ordinance to the Public Safety Committee. We applaud that. We think that's the right thing to do, so that it can be discussed in the public, have input from everybody. But this ordinance has been erroneously tagged as being many things. To set the record straight, it's simply about improving public safety. It's only about improving public safety. It is 100% about giving our policeman additional time to focus on serious crime. It's another tool for them to use in enforcement. It's not about being soft on crime, it's exactly the opposite. It's about giving MPD leadership opportunity to redirect our officer's time, to use it more effectively, time to fight any more serious crime. Again, we applaud the City Council's effort to put it in the Public Safety Committee, and we look forward to the discussion that will be forthcoming regarding this issue. Another great announcement that will come out later today has to do with our YES Initiative. Many of you will recall that YES is acronym for Youth Employed for Success. Today, we have a groundbreaking, first-of-its-kind announcement that we will make in conjunction with the mayor of Gulf Shores, Mayor Robert Kraft, and we hope to see you in the old pre-council room at noon to tell you the opportunity and the doorway that's going to be open for our youth, to give them something meaningful to do this summer. So very excited about that, as we again help our youth, and this too, the Youth Initiative started because of us trying to do something differently about public safety, specifically regarding the crime that we have with our youth, and giving them something meaningful to do, and give them hope for the future. So great announcement coming in the noon. Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it. Ms. Lambert?
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Discussion? Mr. Richardson?
Yes, yes, Madam President. I move to amend the agenda to move 03287 to the front of the agenda, and that's dealing with voting on Mark Seeley as our new and long-awaited fire chief, and to move the presentation of petition and other communications to the front of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution 03287. Suspension of the rules. I need suspension of the rules to consider it.
Yes, for this particular?
Yeah, go ahead and waive the rules, yes.
What's the number?
03, resolution, consent resolution 03287.
Mark, you should suspend the rules and reconsideration of the resolution 03287.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03287, affirming the mayor's appointment of Mark Seeley as fire chief of the Mobile Fire Rescue Department.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I met with Mr. Seeley this morning, had a great conversation with him, told him we were looking forward to him coming on, taking on the fire department, and I told him, "Do good." I also told him I was going to ask him one question, because I think the public would like to know currently, Mr. Seeley lives in Ballin County, and I want to ask you, if we vote you as our next fire chief, will you move to City of Mobile?
Yes, sir.
That's all I want to hear, Madam President. Let's move on.
Well, I'd like to comment.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. I am really pleased to see this item before the council for consideration. The members of the Mobile Fire Rescue Department certainly deserve a chief that is visionary, yet understands the system, because they came from the system, and I think that's really made it an easy appointment from my perspective, knowing how the individual that the mayor's team, and I thank that team for coming together and moving quickly from really a Public Safety Committee meeting, where we heard from members of the Mobile Fire Rescue Department and their concerns about budget issues, overtime, manpower, all the things that really stop and get resolved with the chief. So again, someone from the system, who is part of the system, is really an ideal selection, and I appreciate all the time that it took to go through all the candidates. Having 13 says a lot about the professionalism of your department, and again, I'm very happy to see this day be here on behalf of the people that I represent, so that they get the best service, because that's really my job as a councilperson, is to make sure those services are delivered efficiently and with the best caliber possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davis?
I would just like to commend the mayor and Public Safety Director Barber for the process that was followed in this selection. A blue ribbon panel was pulled together, and we had the police chief from Montgomery, who's nationally, I mean, excuse me, the fire chief from Montgomery, who's nationally recognized for what he's been able to do up there. It was a unanimous decision of this blue ribbon panel, and that makes the council's decision a lot easier. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? I too commend the mayor, the administration, the panel that came together to make this selection, and to everyone who applied and put your plans together and came forth for the interviews, thank you so much. It really means a lot to us that you were that interested, that you wanted to be a part of that. I think Mark Seeley, who was here with us today, and his wife, will be a terrific addition as, he's been with the fire department for a long time, as we know, but now he will, after this vote, be promoted to our fire chief, and we look forward to having him at the helm. We've talked with him, we've done some background checks on you, Mark, so I don't think we don't know what you're about. But anyway, this is a great day. We've waited for this for a long time, and I'm just really happy that we are here today in a position to vote on a new fire chief. Mr. Williams?
First of all, thank you very much for your willingness to serve us, and Christine, for your sacrifice, that is certain to be a part of this duty. We must not forget that we probably, no, we had the most qualified panel of candidates that any city could wish for, and we are so well-served in Mobile Fire and Rescue, and this city owes you a great debt of gratitude, and I know that we will be well-served. Thank you very much.
Thank you, exactly. Anyone else?
Well.
Mr. Small?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to the chief, and also congratulations to the other candidates that was also in line also. But I would like to put this on record, chief, and one thing I would like for you to work on is diversity, and that's including women in the fire department. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President. I want to join my colleagues in saying congratulations to Chief Seeley. I've had an opportunity to talk with him briefly, but in the interim between the announcement and today, I've heard very positive things about his leadership over the last two decades with the fire department. I want to commend the administration, Mayor Stimson, the committee. I join Mr. Williams in saying, I think the five that were selected were certainly of the highest caliber that could have been selected probably anywhere in this country, and to know that those other four individuals will continue to be in the employ of our fire department shows just how strong a leadership team the chief will have as he endures to lead this very important department. I've supported the fire department the last three and a half years, look forward to continuing to support the initiatives of this department under your leadership. We've also discussed my greatest concern, which is Station 14, if I'm not mistaken, pardon me, Station 21, in the Plateau community, because those citizens call me daily almost to say, "Hey, these are issues, this isn't addressed," and I know that's going to be something that you and Director Barber will be tackling hopefully in the near future, so welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you.
All right, anyone else? Well, let's make this official, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Johnson for that wonderful invocation we had earlier. I couldn't agree more. I thank God first for this opportunity, and that's exactly how I look at it, as an opportunity. I could not be more honored and humbled to be able to serve this city, its citizens, and to serve alongside men and women that I've known for, like Councilman Manzi said, for over two decades. I've worked hard with those people, and I know them very well, and they work hard. I'm so proud of them. I want to thank the council for your entrusting me with this huge opportunity. I certainly want to thank the mayor and his staff, Chief Barber. They put together, like you said, an excellent team. I think they did the process the correct way. They were excellent candidates, and I'm, like I said, I'm so humbled to be selected from among those. And thank the firefighters. I thank their support, they're behind us, and I'm excited about the opportunity. I'm excited for our department.
Chief, introduce your wife.
My wife, Christine, 27 years.
Christine, stand up, you're part of this. And we do have a lot of folks here from the department. Will you all please stand up too, so we can recognize you? Thank you. Thank you for coming and being a part of this. And now, the council would like to get a photo with you, the mayor, director, if y'all could come up here, and let's do a quick photo. Marion, have you got the camera ready?
Yeah, let's just stand up. All right. Oh, yeah. Push hands. Okay. Hey, CJ. A little bit, get him out of the way, and then walk his guy.
Okay. Why don't you stand that way? Yeah, just like that. You get the middle, right, where it's hard to sight.
Everybody in? Can we see everybody? Y'all scoot down a little bit.
Yeah.
Are you going to take them?
I'll move on.
One, two. Who are you looking at?
George first.
One, two, three.
Get one?
Congratulations, chief.
Congratulations.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Deborah Velders, Director of Mobile Museum of Art.
Deborah Velders, Mobile Museum of Art in Langen Park. Members of City Council, Mayor Stimson, and friends, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Deborah Velders, and I have the good fortune of serving as Director of the Mobile Museum of Art. I speak today on behalf of our staff and Board of Directors, several of whom are present today, and I'd like to ask that they stand and be recognized. They are fantastic members of the board. I will begin my brief remarks with a collective thanks for your support of this city's only art museum over the past 53 years. In 1964, a combination of government, corporate, and individual leaders came together to create an art museum for the city of Mobile. The same combined support continues to make our art museum a cultural destination and resource for this city that we all serve and cherish. The Mobile Museum of Art has a simple mission, which is also in your packets, educate, engage, enrich through the arts. First, we educate by presenting exhibitions of art, but we also provide guided tours, art-making classes, gallery talks, and programs in every art discipline, music, dance, poetry, theater, and we do this for anyone and everyone in this city. Second, we engage by connecting art to people, and the art in turn connects people with each other. Those connections, impelled by art, help to create and strengthen families and communities. How? All art communicates our shared values, our ideals, and a sense of our shared humanity. Finally, we enrich lives through art. Art museums are typically economic engines for tourism, attracting travelers and businesses to Mobile for their cultural amenities. But you also see such enrichment in the face of a child learning about another culture through art, or their thrill at their own creative achievement. Then there is the statistical metric evidence of how our museum enriches the city of Mobile. We have several satellite exhibitions of art, including installations at the Mobile Airport and a downtown pop-up museum. Together with the museum's attendance at Langen Park, our art is seen by over 1.5 million viewers each year. We host 200 schools each year, benefiting over 7,000 children through our various programs, tours, camps, and art classes. For the past two years, the museum has raised funds for outreach classes at the Salvation Army's Family Haven Shelter, serving 30 to 40 children and adults per class. In 2013, we increased museum access for families, students, and working people by expanding Thursday hours from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then we made each Thursday free for residents of Mobile. This represents a 400% increase in free admissions and a 20% expansion of access in hours that we are open. Three of our current exhibitions are contributing to our city's cultural and economic vitality, each focused on Alabama in celebration of the state's bicentennial. One of these, Kristen Berry in Alabama, was just extended due to the popularity and growing attraction for tourists. I invite each of you and your families to a private guided tour of those exhibitions at your convenience. If Mobile is born to celebrate, we are doing our best to give you a museum worth celebrating. And finally, a 2012 Southern Arts Research Survey found that the arts in Alabama amounts to 5% of the state's economy, generating $9 billion in revenue, $2 billion in wages, and employing more than 70,000 people in the state. We're proud to be part of this state's cultural and economic vitality, and even more proud to be part of Mobile's creative economy. You've made our success possible, and the board joins me in thanking you for your support and encouragement of the only art museum in South Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Good morning, President Gregory, and the mayor stepped out to do a picture, but I'm sure he'll be back in just a minute. My name is Debbie Cardwell, and I am representing the American Heart Association. I am not one of your constituents, however, I am very much involved in the Mobile community because in my position, I work directly with the EMS programs throughout the state and the hospitals throughout the state. So I spend a significant amount of time in Mobile, and I know a lot about you, and I'm very, very proud to be here today. My role today is to say thank you and congratulations to the city of Mobile's Fire and Rescue EMS Department, because they have done something very extraordinary over the last year. They are one of only three EMS agencies to receive American Heart Association's EMS award at the Gold Plus, which is the highest level that you can achieve. American Heart Association put into place the EMS recognition award program about four years ago, and the intent and the desire of the American Heart Association is that EMS programs look at what they do, work with their hospitals, take a look at how they can make those programs better. And throughout the state of Alabama, that's what EMS programs have done. And what happens when EMS programs and hospitals work together? Patients get better care. That's the bottom line. Lives are saved, disabilities are prevented, and in particular, what this award looks at is how well the city of Birmingham, I mean, the city of Mobile, sorry, Fire and Rescue EMS program has done in that area. They have reduced the amount of time it takes to get two patients, to assess that patient, to have an EKG done and transmitted, and ultimately to transport that patient effectively to the appropriate hospital. So on behalf of the American Heart Association, I'm here to say thank you to these men and women and to each of you for supporting them, because excellence only occurs in an environment of excellence and where leadership charges them to be excellent. They do an excellent, excellent job, they are dedicated to what they do, and you can be very proud of the support that you give to them. So on behalf of them, I'm supposed to give this to the mayor, but Jackie, he's already disappeared too.
He stepped out to take a photo.
I can certainly present it at this time in honor of time. Oh, well, he did get down here. I will, I will present this in recognition of your great work over the last year. Gold Plus, one of only three in the state, and one of only 191 EMS agencies in the nation to make that level.
That's terrific.
Keep up the great work, and I hope to see you again next year.
Thank you. We have the best people.
They are one of only three EMS agencies to receive American Heart Association's EMS award at the Gold Plus, which is the highest level that you can achieve. American Heart Association put into place the EMS recognition award program about four years ago, and the intent and the desire of the American Heart Association is that EMS programs look at what they do, work with their hospitals, take a look at how they can make those programs better. And throughout the state of Alabama, that's what EMS programs have done. And what happens when EMS programs and hospitals work together? Patients get better care. That's the bottom line. Lives are saved, disabilities are prevented. And in particular, what this award looks at is how well the city of Birmingham, I mean the city of Mobile, sorry, a fire and rescue EMS program has done in that area. They have reduced the amount of time it takes to get two patients, to assess that patient, to have an EKG done and transmitted, and ultimately to transport that patient effectively to the appropriate hospital. So on behalf of the American Heart Association, I'm here to say thank you to these men and women and to each of you for supporting them, because excellence only occurs in an environment of excellence and where leadership charges them to be excellent. They do an excellent, excellent job. They are dedicated to what they do, and you can be very proud of the support that you give to them. So on behalf of them, I'm supposed to give this to the mayor, but Jackie, he's already disappeared too.
He stepped out to take a photo.
I can certainly present it at this time in honor of time. Oh, well, he did get down here. I will present this in recognition of your great work over the last year. Gold Plus, one of only three in the state and one of only a hundred and ninety-one EMS agencies in the nation to make that level.
Very nice.
Keep up the great work, and I hope to see you again next year.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have the best people anywhere.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Congratulations.
Public hearings. Today's the public hearing to accept public comment on a proposed application for a transportation alternative grant to include ADA compliant sidewalks along the north side of Oshel Road from Myrtlewood Drive to West I-65 Service Road, matching funds to be provided by the village of Spring Hill.
We'll let some of these folks get out before we continue. Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, tap "Grant Application", please come to the podium. All right. With that, then, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to accept public comments on a proposed application for a transportation alternative program, grant to include ADA compliant sidewalks along the north side of Oshel Road from Parkway Drive West to University Boulevard, matching funds to be provided by Village of Spring Hill.
Okay. This is another public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this, tap "Grant Application", please come to the podium. Just as a point of clarification, these are simply applications that the council is approving the city to move forward with. It's not a done deal by any stretch. This is just the application process. All right. With that, then, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezon property at twenty-one sixty-five and twenty-one sixty-seven Oshel Road, south side of Oshel Road at the southern terminus of Fraser Court from R-1 to R-2.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this reselling, please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Sarah Massing-Stachak. I live at two-eleven Linear Avenue in Mobile. Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council today. I'm a Mobile native, and my husband Mike and I and our three young children moved back to Mobile last summer. In looking at housing options for ourselves and for our aging parents, we recognize that there is a lack of updated, higher-end multifamily housing in the midtown area. With all that the city is doing to promote revitalization of our city core, we believe that residents will desire to be closer to the growing attractions in the downtown and midtown corridors. As a result, we've proposed to build five townhomes on Oshel Road near the commercial intersection of Uppam and Oshel. We've designed an innovative community that we believe is directly in line with the principles laid out in the map for Mobile. We have a hallmark eighty-foot-wide central green space, and all cars and parking will be hidden from the view of neighbors and passerby. In addition, we are planning to use an architectural style and building materials that are consistent with this historic part of town. We were deliberate in choosing property for this multifamily development that is consistent with zoning requirements. Namely, we have a commercial B-two property to the east, and one lot to the west is an R-two subdivision. We have engaged with neighbors and have revised our plan, and now we have broad support for the project. We also sought input from the midtown movement, and they have indicated their support. Their posts on social media about our project generated over a hundred and fifty likes on Facebook. We are very excited about this project. We respectfully ask for your vote today in favor of the rezoning of the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience to speak to this rezoning? Okay. With that, then, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Arlene Pettaway doing business as Quick Shuttle for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application, please come to the podium. Okay. With that, then, the public hearing is closed.
Appeals. Appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of Saint Lucy Episcopal School's application for a planned unit development to allow multiple buildings on a single building site and planning approval for new lighting, sound systems, and bleachers for the athletic area.
Okay. This is an appeal of a Planning Commission ruling. We will ask the appellant to come to the podium first with four speakers. Following the four speakers on the appeal side, we will ask the applicant to come to the podium or supporters of the application. There'll be four speakers on that side. Then the appellant will be able to come to the podium for a rebuttal. So let's start with the appellant. And be sure to give us your name and address for the record.
Madam President, as the first speaker approaches, I just want to remind everyone, as I do so often, that this is not a discussion between any party and any council member or any member of this audience and another member of the audience. And all comments go through the chair, and the chair will address the comment or ask one of the council members to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Manzi?
Never mind. I wanted to, never mind, she stepped out.
Well, she may be back.
Okay. Ms. Farley, would you, would somebody make sure that Dr. Johnson would step back in just for a moment, if you don't mind?
Well, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt anything. Did you want to say something about?
I do, and I don't know if she's leaving.
The lady who gave her her seduction? Is that who you're talking about?
Yes.
All right. Let's, I'm sorry for the interruption. She may be gone.
If she is, I mean, we can move forward. Maybe she's coming back.
Oh, no, here she is. Okay.
Great, great.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Manzi.
I didn't know whether or not you were leaving for good, but I wanted to say before you left, Dr. Lujenia Johnson just informed me that she will be transferring back to the Atlanta area. She has served the Metropolitan Church in District Two valiantly, has really led to a resurgence there at that ministry, has done a wonderful job, been associated with the Inter-Dinominational Ministerial Alliance, has truly been a partner in working with the community in the area that she's been fortunate enough to pastor. And I just wanted, you know, she's come down here several times to pray over these meetings and certainly for some of the issues that we have to deal with, particularly the one we're about to hear about. We need as much prayer as we can get. And so I'm appreciative of all that she's done, and I just did not want you to leave this meeting and moreover this city without acknowledging all that you've done in the city of Mobile, and ask that we all give her a big round of applause.
If I might, I want to just say thank you to Councilman Manzi, and I want to say to all of you, it's just been a pleasure working with you. This has been one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make. I'm a retired middle school principal who went into full-time ministry and have made many decisions, but leaving Mobile has been a difficult one, because I've enjoyed working with the community as well as the church. So I thank you so much for just saying thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Now let's get back to the appeal. Come on forward, sir.
Madam President, counsel, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. My name is Bob Peter. My wife Buffy and I live at fifty-three oh eight Oak Bend Court in the Regency Oaks neighborhood. We've lived there for twenty-six and a half years. I've given you an index of documents to support the appeal, and I will refer to it as well as the other speakers will refer to it during their presentations. On April sixth, two thousand seventeen, the Mobile Planning Commission reviewed applications submitted by Saint Luke's and tentatively approved requests subject to a number of conditions. We believe that the Planning Commission acted arbitrarily in three areas: stadium lighting, number of occurrences per year, and noise. Noise will be addressed by my neighbors Joe Nelson and Mary Ann Robinson. Mr. Dinkins, our neighbor in Zach Logan, will speak about the impact of the project on his quality of life. Please refer to tab number six. The Planning Commission acted arbitrarily in ignoring the commission staff's belief that the zero-point-two-foot candle requirement, which is section six-four dash six-A point eight, should be appropriate for any type of lighting where commercial or institutional use abuts a residential property line, and by approving the applications by allowing foot candles at the east property line as high as six-foot candles, and by not requiring a glare study to demonstrate that the lighting fixtures are sufficiently shielded to prevent glare on adjacent properties and rights away, which is section sixty-four six-B five. Example of a glare study is on tab number nine. This is not a glare study for Saint Luke's, it's just an example of one. In their two thousand seventeen application, Saint Luke's applied to install new sports field lighting for their football soccer field, consisting of four seventy-foot-high poles with pole-top assemblies holding ten fifteen-hundred-watt metal halide HID lamps, two located near the east property line, which is Zach Logan, and two on the west side of the football field. Photometric computer-generated projections of expected illumination illustrated light levels and foot candles for a blanket grid which included both the south and east property lines. These were provided as part of the application by Saint Luke's from their vendor, Musco Lighting. The photometric projection demonstrated that the light levels along the east property line exceeded the levels called for in section sixty-four dash six-A point eight of the zoning ordinance, which requires that the light spill at the property line not exceed zero-point-two foot candles. The projections illustrated light levels as high as six-foot candles. Saint Luke's and Musco Lighting representatives both stated that this issue could not be mitigated and that they could not meet the zero-point-two-foot candle requirement. Additionally, Saint Luke's refused a number of requests that Musco produce an environmental glare impact illustration and provided to the Planning Commission and our group. Saint Luke's also refused a request that Musco provide us with raw photometric data which would enable us to produce the glare impact illustration at our cost from a third-party engineering firm. Concerning the nights per year, the Planning Commission acted arbitrarily by approving the allowance of sixty-five nights events per year, which was not supported by documentation. I've included the city sports, the Alabama High School Athletic Association's sports calendar with the packet. Any application, the school stated that they intended to use the illuminated fields between twenty-four and sixty-four times per year. The Alabama High School Athletic Association allows for ten varsity football games per year, not counting playoffs. Saint Luke's would host five games, and five games would be away. JV football has a total of eight games, and if four home games were played at night, that would account for nine uses of the proposed lighted football fields on an annual basis. Varsity boys and girls soccer accounts for twenty games, JV soccer for fourteen, for a total of forty-two uses of the lighted field if all games were scheduled at night. In closing, Saint Luke's has options that we don't. Does the Regency Oaks, Zach Logan, Steve Street neighborhoods possess qualities worth safeguarding, or should the residents be asked to sacrifice their quality of life inside and outside their homes? Should the homeowners risk the strong possibility of property values decreasing in their homes that they've invested in for decades? We respectfully request that the city council favorably consider our appeal of the Planning Commission's decisions regarding Saint Luke's applications. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If this council makes a putt subject to a condition...
Ma'am, would you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I thought you knew me by now. Joe Nelson. I reside at five-three oh five Oak Bend Court. If this council makes a putt subject to a condition, the putt applicant must meet that condition. The Planning Commission held an applicant could avoid your condition and the law by a contract with a third party. This was an abuse of discretion. The law requires a buffer. In the record, Saint Luke's converted the buffer to personal use, and in fact, they cut down the trees and gave it to other homeowners. Saint Luke's has violated the express condition of the two thousand nine putt, which was supported and held over through all the holdover periods. It was also an express condition of the tentatively approved April sixth, two thousand seventeen putt. The putt approvals are no longer valid. For this reason, the putt application before the city council must be denied. The city council and putt applicants are bound to comply with the zoning ordinances it created. The Planning Commission's putt approval is both arbitrary and capricious and an abuse of discretion because it fails to address all parts of the noise ordinance.
Ms. Nelson, could you move back just a little bit from the microphone?
Thanks. The applicant, the city, and all parties agree that Saint Luke's is bound by the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance clearly has more than one restriction, but the Planning Commission only considered one restriction. To qualify for the putt approval, the putt's use cannot violate any of the ordinance's restrictions. It states, thank you, it shall be unlawful, a nuisance, and a violation of this section, and it goes on to list the numerous residential restrictions. A putt application is site-specific. Some schools are able to comply with the noise ordinance. Saint Luke's school is unable to comply, so the putt must be denied, and Saint Luke's must play its home games at an off-campus site, just like some other Mobile schools such as McGill. The noise ordinance has two tests, and each test considers two types of noises, so there are at least four noise ordinance restrictions that the Planning Commission must address. Test one, stand on the property line. If the noise exceeds eighty-five decibels, the noise ordinance is violated, and the putt cannot be approved. The city cannot approve a putt that violates its ordinances. Test two, stand on the property line, then walk fifty feet away. If you can plainly hear any noise at fifty feet away from the property line, it violates the noise ordinance, and the putt cannot be approved. The noise ordinance states there are two types of noises that can violate the sound ordinance: sound and loud and raucous noise. Sound includes any device that produces or reproduces sound. It includes musical instruments, drums, sound amplifying equipment. It includes horns, starter guns, whistles, et cetera. Loud and raucous noise includes any other noise which disturbs the peace and quiet of any residential district. It includes yelling, crowd noise, bleacher stomping, et cetera. When you look at the record, you'll see the Planning Commission ignored three of the four noise ordinance restrictions that must be passed for the putt application to be approved. The Planning Commission did address one portion of one of the restrictions, the stand-on-the-property-line-eighty-five-decibel-test-for-amplified-sound, though arbitrarily and capriciously. It did not address at all three other restrictions that must be complied with: stand-on-the-property-line-eighty-five-decibel-test-for-loud-and-raucous-noise, fifty-feet-from-the-property-line-plainly-audible-test-for-amplified-sound, fifty-feet-from-the-property-line-plainly-audible-test-for-loud-and-raucous-noise. The Planning Commission did not get any evidence from any appropriate official regarding the combined noise level of all of those amplified sounds together. When Saint Luke's said it would comply with the noise ordinance, it specifically limited its evidence to only one source of noise, the loudspeaker. There was no evidence concerning other types of amplified sound. There was no proof submitted regarding the combination of noises from a soccer game. This putt asks to install the loudspeaker for the purpose of athletic events. It is not enough that Saint Luke's says that the PA system can dial down to eighty-five decibels. The PA system is not intended to be used in isolation. One bass drum plays at a one-ten decibel at the property line, twenty feet from the movable bleachers, all noises together, that drum, the loudspeaker...
Madam President? Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, that was the end of my sentence. That was my end. Thank you. Mary Ann will finish the rest of it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Robinson, and I've lived at fifty-three thirteen Oak Bend Court for almost twenty years. I'm a retired professor of education, had a thirty-year career serving the betterment of children, and for my entire life, I have been a child advocate. I'm going to continue where Joe left off. She was ending with, it's not enough that Saint Luke's says, the PA system salesman says that Saint Luke's can dial down the sound to eighty-five decibels. The PA system is not intended to be used in isolation. One bass drum plays at a one-ten decibel at the property line, twenty feet from the movable bleachers, all noises together, that drum, the loudspeaker...
Madam President? Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, that was the end of my sentence. That was my end. Thank you. Mary Ann will finish the rest of it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Robinson, and I've lived at fifty-three thirteen Oak Bend Court for almost twenty years. I'm a retired professor of education, had a thirty-year career serving the betterment of children, and for my entire life, I have been a child advocate. I'm going to continue where Joe left off. She was ending with, it's not enough that Saint Luke's says, the PA system salesman says that Saint Luke's can dial down the sound to eighty-five decibels. The PA system is not intended to be used in isolation. One bass drum plays at a one-ten decibel at the property line, twenty feet from the movable bleachers, all noises together, that drum, the loudspeaker...
Madam President? Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, that was the end of my sentence. That was my end. Thank you. Mary Ann will finish the rest of it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Court for almost twenty years. I'm a retired professor of education, had a thirty-year career serving the betterment of children, and for my entire life, I have been a child advocate. I'm going to continue where Joe left off. She was ending with, it's not enough that Saint Luke's says, the PA system salesman says that Saint Luke's can dial down the sound to eighty-five decibels. The PA system is not intended to be used in isolation. One bass drum plays at a one-ten decibel at the property line, twenty feet from the One bass drum plays at a hundred-and-ten decibels. At the property line, twenty feet from the movable bleachers, all noises together, that drum, the loudspeaker, and all of the other noises of a football game cannot exceed eighty-five decibels in a residential district. Who has the duty to prove the noise ordinance will be violated? Not the opposing homeowners. It is the duty of the applicant to provide proof, test by an appropriate authority, that it does not exceed eighty-five decibels. No proof was provided. To the contrary, only a bare assertion that the sound system was promised to comply was offered. No specifications or tests of the sound system were offered. No other noises were even discussed, although this is clearly required by the noise ordinance. It is the duty of the city to base its decision upon test by an appropriate authority. The staff reports confirm that no sound test was done. Saint Luke's has repeatedly asserted to the homeowners that it is not responsible for any noise other than the loudspeaker. Section E of the noise ordinance makes it clear that Saint Luke's is responsible for, and I quote, "all noises coming from its property. Any person permitting a sound to be created in or emanate from any premises under his care, custody, or control shall be presumed responsible for any sound or noise," end quote. Nowhere does the planning commission address the rest of the noise ordinance. The homeowners raised this issue in their letters and in their speeches. Their pleas were ignored. Neither Saint Luke's nor the planning commission discussed loud and raucous noise at all. Saint Luke's is already violating the noise ordinance with its gunshots. Those of us who have houses on Oak Bend Court located across the street from the houses bordering Saint Luke's can hear the gunshots from our backyards and inside our homes with the doors and windows shut. And I would like to note that I have installed replacement doors and windows that are better sound-blocking, high-energy-efficient ones, and I still hear this. This activity is not exempted under the bells and chimes exception section of the noise ordinance, yet we have not complained. We have not complained to the schools since this section, since, excuse me, since that we are, we perceive this as minor, and we're trying to be good neighbors. However, we also can hear school announcements from our backyards and from inside our homes. For example, students being called to the office. I heard the most recent information about their most recent fundraiser, the details of that. My backyard is located over three hundred and forty feet from Saint Luke's property line. The speaker projecting that sound is mounted to a building located much farther back than the proposed stadium site. It is unreasonable to think that a stadium located ridiculously close to the property line with metal bleachers filled with shouting fans, bands, announcers, and other noises that constitute loud and raucous noise would not be in direct violation of the noise ordinance. Based on these facts in this case, the planning commission's decision was arbitrary because there was no explanation for why it refused to address the other parts of the noise ordinance. It was capricious because there is no evidence to justify ignoring the other parts of the noise ordinance. When the facts in this record clearly showed that the planning commission, that the noise would violate the ordinance and require the denial of the PUD, the planning commission simply ignored it. If there is amplified sound, it will be plainly audible far more than fifty feet from Saint Luke's property line. It was an abuse of discretion because there was no effort whatsoever to balance the interest of the neighbors in this application. This PUD should be denied. Otherwise, ordinances mean nothing. And property owners will be misled into purchasing homes under the assumption that the laws will be upheld.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
My name is Mr. Ben Edward Denken Sr. I live at fifteen-fourteen Steve Street West Zach Logan Estate. Zach Logan was my grandfather. My property backed up to Saint Luke track on the east side. I lived in my house for fifty-seven years. Even as a child, I played in the area. Zach Logan Estates have been home for me my entire life. I have enjoyed living there. I am eighty years old, and I am a widow. My wife died six years ago. I've lived alone in my house since then. I get in the bed every night about seven o'clock. I hate, I, you have a picture of me standing at the back of my driveway. I think it's behind three, number three. My German Shepherd's dog, Chunky, stands up beside me with his paw on top of the white fence. He's my protector. Guarding him is my protector. And bought at every one or any noise near my house. I also live in a small kitchen house with two chickens on the other side of my shed kitchen. That the backside of Chunky's pen is the white fence on my side of the buffet area. Saint Luke's wooden fence is on the other side of the buffet. The buffet is nothing more than some scrub bushes and vines. I understand that the distance from the edge of Saint Luke track on the fence on my side of the buffet is about eight feet, eight yards. That's not very far. Saint Luke's place, their motor bleachers, where they show on the drawing of the bleachers, will be partly behind my house. The people on the, those stands will be right there behind my house. And I guess that, yes, there could be a band there, too. The back of my house is the, is about forty-three feet from where I am standing in the back. So the noise from the people and any band will be loud. Saint Luke's permanent bleachers and the press box on the west side of the field will face toward my house. I assume that the public address system will also point my way. I think that will be Saint Luke home side. So the noise from the, from that band, fan yelling, the PA system, Saint Luke band would be direct at me. I don't think any of you would like that noise and those lights when you are trying to sleep. I won't, and I know Chunky, my chicken, won't, and my neighbors won't, especially my neighbors who live next door to me and is years older. And especially in the noise and the lights from, could occur up to sixty-four yards nights on the school year. That is, based your respect, asks you to disapprove the school planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we will hear from the applicant.
Thank you very much. My name is Terry Holt. I am the chairman of the facilities committee.
I don't want to interrupt, but was that the entire...
Those were four.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure that they were, they were completed. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Am I okay to go?
Well, I'm just asking a question now. Just please understand I wasn't talking to you. And so we're gonna, are we gonna hear from four others? Is that what, is that what the applicant has? Just, just kind of wondering, yes? Okay? All right? Very well.
We have four people on the applicant's side, correct?
Thank you. Yep. Just want to check on that. Sometimes when there's not four, we allow a different timing, and that's the reason for my questioning. So, okay.
Do we have four people on?
Thank you.
Be three. If you want four, you can have four.
Yes, ma'am. You may reserve that time.
All right. And then, of course, the appellant comes back for rebuttal following. Okay? All right.
Let me try again. Good morning. My name is Terry Holt. I'm the chairman of the facilities committee at Saint Luke's School. I also live at four thousand Sierra Drive. That's the Sierra Bonita neighborhood behind, or actually a little below, the Saint Luke's lower campus, and that'll be important in a minute. We started this project late last fall. We, we took a lot of due diligence to be prepared, presented to the neighbors. We invited them to come to a meeting in December, first time we introduced the project publicly. We also met with them here in this room when the first application was postponed or held over. That was in March. And then, of course, after that, we met with them at our facility, gave them a tour of the facility at that time. That also included the athletic fields. We came here on April the sixth, and we were faced with the approval of the planning commission, which was, of course, while we were here. But you have to understand that the planning commission staff had asked the planning commission to review all the relevant facts and vote on our project based on its own merits. They did that, which is why we're here today. Immediately, appeal was filed. We have changed nothing in our project since the very beginning. We know that there are things we have to do. They're the right things, by the way. The lighting photometric that was provided by Musco Lighting, it clearly shows that the majority of the land around the athletic fields will be not affected at all. The foot candles drops to zero before we get to the property line. We are very concerned about the east side, and we're prepared to do whatever we can to meet the planning commission's expectations. We will comply, and we will seek for the satisfaction of our neighbors. We also were faced with fifteen minutes after the game to be able to turn the lights off. And we said, well, how are we going to do that? But we accepted it, and we now have agreed to install emergency lighting to allow everyone to exit properly. We also will move any type of coaching interviews indoors. We will also comply with the requested six-foot evergreens. So everything that was requested of us, we have agreed to, that was passed by the planning commission. As always, we want to continue to be good neighbors. We only ask that as we move forward, that we're given the opportunity to complete the project. Around our fair city, including fields that are owned by the city of Mobile, there are many, many athletic facilities, soccer fields, football fields, that are right alongside their neighbors with no buffer whatsoever. It's been stated, and you have in your possession, it shows you clearly, the buffers. That is far beyond anything else that we can find anyone else has been asked to do. We did that in the beginning in two thousand nine. Today, all we're asking is that we're able to put lights on an existing field. We're not building a field. We're not building a sports complex, and we're not building a stadium. In the packet you have, you'll see the, you'll see the bleachers that we proposed with the press box. You'll also see that, that is from Satsuma, by the way. That's actually, I believe, the last page of the packet. That is actually from Satsuma, and that is their guest bleachers. We're proposing just a little over five hundred and fifty seats total. Now, all around our city, there are lights bleeding over onto other people's property. We've been asked to take care of that, and we will. We've been asked to protect noise-wise, we will. We ask now that the city council please uphold the decision, the planning council, or the planning commission, I'm sorry, and uphold what they have done, and that is to review the facts and to judge us on our merits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I wonder if we might get some clarification on the last picture. There's some, it appears to be like a chalk-in or chalk-out white print.
What page?
And whether or not that can be explained on what, what that is on the drawing.
Is that...
What page?
Behind tab eight.
Last page.
Yeah. The last page, very last page.
Just, what is, what is the whiteout portion?
Yeah, there's a whited-out area.
Okay, the whiteout area actually shows you, if you'll look in the preceding pages, that'll actually show you what the bleachers will look like, and that's the press box
Madam President, council members, my name is James Brandenburg. I live at twenty-six hundred Sedgfield Place, and I rise in support of Saint Luke's application for a number of reasons. The number-one reason is that, as personal, my son, William, is a rising senior, and this is going to be his first opportunity to play on his home football field. I pay special attention to the application or the appeal filed by the homeowners, and certainly, we make no effort to minimize their feelings, certainly we understand that. The basis of their appeal is twofold. They present to you that the decision was arbitrary and capricious, and I submit to you that the planning commission's sole purpose is to go through a process by which applications are made, and they are allowed to look at those applications. Now, Saint Luke's has agreed to abide by a number of restrictions put on them by the planning commission. I think that's very important. Their number-one concern is the number of nights. And comparatively speaking, with regard to other stadiums, I'm sure that there are, in other schools, there are, there are more nights than the sixty-five nights that the planning commission actually granted Saint Luke's with regard to this matter. But the athletic director has been very specific in understanding that we are willing to limit, though, and comply with the requirement that we have only sixty-five nights. And certainly, all of you, all of us, especially in Mobile, are familiar that we have, we have football games all over the city on Friday nights, and there is no school that plays all ten of their football games at, at the stadium. That's not going to happen. Certainly, there are away games, and certainly, we account for the number of varsity, I'm sorry, junior varsity of games, if they're in, because right now we don't have a junior varsity team, and soccer games. As Terry has said, the field is limited to a little under six, six hundred seats, and in those six hundred seats, we certainly have a home side and a visitor's side. Now, our biggest rival, rival has been Mobile, Mobile Christian, and we played our games over at West Mobile Park. And the, one of the biggest games of the year, we counted basically two-hundred-and-fifty cars, and so we certainly have more than enough area to accommodate any, any parking with regard to that. We have in excess of two-hundred-and-eighty-seven parking spaces that are available. I will tell you that the traffic engineering department has also looked at our plans, and they are in compliance and have no problem with that. The other issue that they raised is with regard to the noise ordinance. And it's specific. We have to comply with the noise ordinance, which means that we can't go over eighty-five decibels, and that's on the property line. In this particular situation, and I will tell you, we do have a baseball field, and the baseball field has a public address system, and we have a decibel meter, and we are well below that... and the baseball field has a public address system, and we have a decibel meter, and we are well below that as well. But I will submit to you that as part of our plan is that we will use a meter with regard to the PA system for the football field as well, and will monitor ourselves the same way, and we accept responsibility for that. And I think the other thing that's most important, and certainly you've seen the, the planning commission's requirements, is that we understand that these people live in this neighborhood, but we also understand that that football field that's at St. Luke's was there the whole time, and that as a matter of fact, the school that predated St. Luke's was there before even the neighborhood was there. And so with regard to us being good neighbors, we have to also understand that we are a community, we're a community of schools. And St. Luke's is merely another school in this whole community who's asking for the same treatment that all the other schools have been given. And Terry gave a couple of examples, but if anybody's familiar with UMS Wright School on Old Shell Road, they have lights for their baseball field that shines across the street to their neighbors and to their neighbors on the side. There are no buffers whatsoever, and St. Luke's has been required to put buffers in its place, and we've had buffers there before. We're, we're being required to add additional buffers. No other school has been required to do that. Sage Park is another example, a facility where the lights shine and there are no buffers. And so we're being asked to do something that other schools have not been asked to do, and we've agreed to comply with that, and we will, we will comply with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis has a question. Mr. Brandyberg, you may want to stay at the podium.
Yes, sir. I, I have a question, and it's really... If y'all told us this, I've missed it. These, these summaries, illumination summaries between, behind tabs two, three, and four, could you tell me what they are?
Okay. You'll be able to, yeah. Our representative from Musco will be in a better position to explain that to you.
Is this, is this telling me what the candle power of the illumination is at these various locations?
It, it is.
The next speaker, Joel.
But the next speaker will explain that to you.
Okay, okay.
I'd like that.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Yes, sir, I'll try to address that. My name is Jimmy Jumper, and I'm with Musco Sports Lighting. I guess first of all, let me say more than anything, I'm here for, to be a resource for you. I want to, I want, we do this every day for a living, this is what we do. We work with communities all across the state of Alabama, and I want to be a resource for you as we've been for St. Luke's and any other community. As far as the grid that you have, I'll go ahead and address that. That is a spill grid, and that shows, that is, that shows a spill light. That's a...
What, what tab is that?
Is that in here?
Three?
Yeah, yeah.
The spill light is behind.
You're, you're looking at this page right here, I assume, is what you're looking at.
With the square, it's got the...
Okay, that square is a layout of the football field, and that football field will be illuminated to fifty-foot camps.
This is the one behind tab four.
Behind tab four.
And then you have a blanket grid that shows the individual readings, and a thirty-point grid, which is this one right here. Is this the page you're looking at?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay. This shows the amount of spill light. All the way around this field within this blanket, you can see the individual spill light readings that are, that will be indicated once the light is in and installed and operational. So that is a blanket grid, is what that is.
Okay, can you, can you just take a couple of instances and, and maybe illuminate the grid for me?
Like F, F-four and F-three?
You've got a bunch of numbers in here, but I think I know what they mean, but I want to be sure I know what they mean.
When we do a project, the IES governing body for sports lighting on the football fields says there's seventy-two grid points inside that football field. That is inside that box or inside that track right there. And what we will do, as a manufacturer, is we will come out and we will take a reading at each of those seventy-two grid points, and those light levels should be what's shown on this grid point. If they're not, as a manufacturer, we come in, re-aim, fine-tune, do whatever we need to do to get those readings, what they're supposed to be. As far as the readings outside, we put together a blanket grid to show the individual readings outside that field so that you would know how much spill light or how much light will actually be outside the actual playing areas, what this is. And we have a light meter, and our meter is calculated or, it's recalibrated every year, and it has to be done to meet IES guidelines. And so we take that light meter that's been recalibrated, and we go around and we take readings at as many of these spots as we need to take readings at to make sure we're consistent for what's on this. We know from our photometrics that we can get to these light levels that are shown here. And, and what you will see, basically, from a spill light standpoint, most of the readings are, are zero outside the playing field.
Zero, zero what?
Zero. There'll be no light, there'll be no spill light.
Is it zero can, zero candle power?
Zero candle power. Will not even register on the meter, is what it will be. There will be no reading on the meter. There are some readings behind poles F-three and F-four where we could not get to the zero point two. There are some readings five or six, but they're very limited, but we have looked at this in several different ways. And so that's what that is. It's basically a blanket grid showing the light levels that we know as a manufacturer that we can meet or exceed. Now, that is taken without any consideration, I, I didn't mean to jump into this, I had some other things I was going to talk to you about, but that is taken without any consideration to any of the foliage that's there whatsoever. This would be just like an open field, and so when you add the foliage, foliage in there, we're confident that those three and four and five readings that you see behind poles F-three and F-four will actually be less than that. However, there's no criteria, there is, there is a, there is a stipulation to take vegetative limitation to vegetation into consideration on reading spill light, but we did not take that. We showed you what will be a worst-case scenario without any, if there were no vegetation whatsoever there, it would just be like an open space is what you're looking at.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, let me, let me back up just a little bit.
Yeah, since Mr. Davis did interrupt and asked some questions.
That's fine, that's fine. That's, we were going to talk about that anyway, but like I said, I am with Musco Sports Lighting. We do this every day. When, I want to be a resource for you, I want to be a resource for St. Luke's, I want to be a resource for these folks over here. When we were asked to put together a proposal, I want to be perfectly clear about a couple of things. First of all, Musco is the industry leader in sports lighting. We do more sports lighting than anybody in the country. We realize that parks, schools, fields, athletic fields all over the country are being built in residential neighborhoods or residential housings are being built around athletic facilities. Musco realized the spill and glare concerns twenty-five, thirty years ago. I've got some packets I'll leave you with, and you can take this and look at it, it might help you. But one of the things that we did, and Musco gets put into a category of every other manufacturer, and that's not who we are. Twenty-five, thirty years ago, we all used just a lightweight aluminum housing. We put a bulb in it, and we called it sports lighting, and sports lighting went everywhere. When you were going to an athletic complex or a field or a high school football field, you could see the glow for miles away. That was light wasted, light wasted energy. And so we started back in the seventies trying to learn how to control that light with inserts, visors, to where we are today with the product that we're putting out or recommending to put out at St. Luke's if it's approved. You've got our lighting, Trinity Gardens, Taylor Park, USA's got it, Lad, Lad Peoples has had our lighting for years. You've got our lighting in the city of Mobile all over. So, everything that we've done is tried to provide an environmentally friendly lighting system. We've tried to be, develop a system that's going to be good for the environment, good for the neighbors, and good for the community. If we did, if we did lighting like some of our competitors or other manufacturers, I, I'd be just as upset as these folks are because you've got facilities here that still have nineteen-seventy technology on it that was supposed to have spill and glare control, that was supposed to have visors, and it, and it didn't get, it didn't happen, and it got approved. And, and some of the places that you've got the lighting is pretty bad. But we've taken that to, to the point that we're now controlling seventy percent of the light out of that fixture. One of the things that we do, just real quickly, we take and we put inserts inside of our fixtures to make sure that we're controlling that light. We just do not have directional light going everywhere. We provide a lighting system that's got controlled lights. The end result is a fixture that looks just like this right here, and you can see the visor that's on that. We have five, seven, and ten-inch visors. When we were first approached by St. Luke's, one of the first things, and I will tell you, we've been talking to St. Luke's about doing their lighting probably for four or five years, if not longer. One of the things, in, in fairness to St. Luke's, that they asked us to do was that they wanted to put a lighting system together that would be as environmentally friendly and as neighborly friendly as we could. We could have used on this project, we could have used sixty-foot mounting heights, and the spill and glare would have been a whole lot worse. The lower the pole, the higher the fixture has to be, so the glare would have been a lot worse. We could have used a five-inch visor on this. We use a lot of five-inch visors on a lot of jobs. We've got a seven-inch, a ten-inch visor on this one, so this is what we call our total cutoff visor is what we've got.
I'm going to have to ask you to go ahead and wrap it up. I know Mr. Davis interrupted you, so we had to be a little flexible on time. Mrs. Rich?
If that's okay. On, on the light pole that is near Zach Logan, the gentleman that spoke, that he's eight feet from the pole, does your company have anything that could be put up to screen that and, and get it, besides the hooding of the lights? Do you have other technology, I guess for lack of a better word?
No ma'am, not, we have, I, I, I've not seen anything put up on the backside that would shield that. There's going to be very little lighting on the backside of that. Matter of fact, there'll be no lighting on the backside of that fixture. Everything is forward-facing. So the poles that are on the east side, post F-three and F-four, there won't be any lighting coming out of the back of that fixture. Everything is totally enclosed in the front.
So it's directed away?
It's directed onto the field, towards the baseball field, exactly is where that light is going. We have done spill, sports lighting jobs all over the country. In most cases, we've had very good results from the neighbors. We've done work for Homewood, Stavia, many other communities that have some very tight residential houses, residential areas around their facilities, and I think most people will come back and tell you that they've been pleasantly surprised. We've got references.
Yeah, one other question.
All right.
On, can lights be dimmed per pole, or is it all one big system?
No, these are not dimmable lights. These are metal high-light lights. They're not dimmable.
So you depend on the shields to direct?
Right, we, that is correct. And, and going back to the gentleman, Mr. Davis's question about the spill light, you can see the spill light criteria that's outlined in this grid will be less than what you will get from a high-beam headlight out of a car. There will be more spill and glare from a high-beam headlight than what ninety-five percent of these readings will be.
Any other questions while the gentleman is at the podium? Mr. Small?
Thank you. On the lights that the school are proposing, and I know you did several lights throughout the city, do you have any place where you, these lights are already located, what the school are now proposing to bring? Are they located anywhere else in the city?
As far as at St. Luke's, I mean, no.
The same books, as same?
Yes, this same system is installed at Trinity Gardens, the same system is installed at Taylor Park, the same system is at McGill, the same system.
So it's the same system?
Same, same type application.
The same lights?
Same lights.
Same lights.
And the same amount of the inch of the hood too, as well?
Well, the hoods can be different depending on the location. I'll tell you a good examples. If you go to Trinity Gardens, I know we've got the ten-inch garden at Trinity Gardens. One of the first projects that I did for the city of Mobile was at Trinity Gardens, and there was a lot of concern about spill light there, and so we went in and blocked it out, and I think you'll see we've not had any issues caused concerning spill light on the project at Trinity Gardens. So it'll be the same fixture, the same type hood, the same, it won't be the same photometrics because we, we do it each individually for each specific project, but the cutoff will be designed to be the same, same results.
Any other questions?
Something like Trinity Gardens Park, correct?
As far as controlling the spill, yes.
All right, thank you.
And this, this will actually be a little bit tighter than what you've probably got anywhere else because we've been asked to put the most environmentally friendly, neighborly friendly system that we can, and that's what we've done, and that's what we've designed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam President. Kind of along the lines of the questions you're getting now, I know you've referenced Taylor Park, Trinity Gardens. Are there any examples of a field that close to a residential community where you employ this strategy or this system with those visors comparable to what you're suggesting for St. Luke's field?
I know, again, I go back to Trinity Gardens. I know there was some concern about residential people there. Taylor Park has got a lot of apartments over there on the backside.
Because you, you referenced Hoover, some other municipalities that you've done some work in, so have there been any other communities that you installed this system in where, you know, you possibly could, could vouch that, hey, they put the system in, we didn't have the concerns, or they mitigated our concerns as a result of attaching this visor or that visor to the lights?
I could give you references, cities all over the state that, that we've done sports lighting jobs and, and resolved those issues. I go back to Homewood. We had a situation at Homewood on the soccer fields there at Lakeshore. There were houses on the south side of that facility, and the residents had some concerns. And after we put the lights up, the actual residents actually came back to the Maryland City Council and said, hey, the lights exceeded our expectations. We do not have the back of our house lit up. We also had to do the same thing in Daltham. We did a couple of projects down there, I know. And even in Muscle Shoals, I live in Muscle Shoals, we've had to address the high school football field. And we put the same lights up there, and I, I know I live there, so I made sure that everybody was very happy with the final result, and they were. I do have some references if you need that, and any other things that will help you as you evaluate this, I'll be glad to provide that. But I will tell you that we've gone above and beyond.
Let me ask if there are any other questions. Mr. Manzi, any other questions? Any other questions from the council? All right, appreciate it. Thank you for coming. All right, we still have time for one other speaker on the applicant's side. If anybody wants to. All right, with that then, we will take a rebuttal from the appellant.
Madam President and council members, my name is Kirk Shaw, and I live at 5309 Oakman Court. My wife lives there. We have argued that the planning commission acted arbitrarily when it approved the lighting arrangement that St. Luke's has proposed. As you know, the purpose of the lighting requirements and the foot candles at the property line is to protect the neighbors from having unwounded light, light trespass. In this case, the school, the planning staff and their report to the, to the commission said that it's their belief, staff belief, that the oh-point-two foot candle requirement at the property line should be appropriate for any type of lighting where a commercial or institutional use abuts a residential property line. Now, in this case, the school argued, well, there are trees out there that will reduce that from the figures that are shown in the photometric study, and the staff left it to the planning commission to evaluate that and other considerations in making their decision. But we argue that the, as you see, that those photometric studies, the small ones we have, are hard to read, but the planning, the staff pointed out that some of the foot candles over on the Steve Street side, the Zach Logan's street side, go up to six. That is well in excess of oh-point-two. And the Musco representative stated, and I believe he restated today, that they couldn't get it down to oh-point-two. The best they could do was to get it to point seven if they used LED lights, which is another issue we haven't had time to get into today. But my point is, they're going to have light in the backyards of the people in the Zach Logan area. And although it may control, I forgot the words, they may have avoided lights on three sides. You've got that fourth side that they're going to have lights in their backyard. And where the planning commission acted arbitrarily, in my opinion, is that they did not set a standard for what is permitted foot candle-wise at the property line. Essentially, they said, okay, you've said it'll be four here, five here, six here, we're going to hold you to that figure. Well, that doesn't tell the next person coming along who's wanting to do something what standard they got to meet. In fact, it opens the door, really, for anybody to come in and argue, well, we just couldn't meet it, and here's trees, and no, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's arbitrary to do that. Look at the photo, if you would, again, of Mr. Dinkins behind number three, and you can see, as far as the trees protecting anything, there's a lot of open space there above the bushes, and then on, on number four there, there's the neighbor's house. There's also a lot of light shining through there. Well, the, the lights from the football stadium... there. Well, the, the lights from the football stadium are not, are gonna be directed down. They're not gonna be like the sun that shines from above, or the moon that shines from above and can be blocked by, by leaves. This is gonna be coming through those openings, and it's gonna make life miserable for Mr. Dinkins and his neighbors over there. And because the planning commission did not set some standard, they just authorized what they had projected as what they could do, that is arbitrary and is a reason for our reversal of this decision. A second, yeah, the statement was made that the majority of land is not affected by the lights at all, but that leaves this part of the land that is affected. Noise, if I understood what was being said here today, that there was gonna be something over five hundred seats, and I didn't understand if that's just on the school side or the visitor side or altogether, but the reason we, we reacted in saying that there's a thousand feet, thousand-seat stadium is because that's what on the drawing that they submitted to the planning staff, five hundred on one side, five hundred on the other. And if it's approved, if this is go through, then I would assume they've got that authority at some point to go to that size. The other issue that's been addressed that I want to speak to is the number of nights. The school asks for two periods of time. They ask for two to four nights per week for eight weeks in the fall, football season, and they ask for two to four nights per week for, in the soccer season, which was between February and April, I believe. When the planning commission ruled, they just said you can have sixty-five nights, and arguably, that could be at any time. The math is, the, the, the school, the planning commission's decision is not supported by the math. If you do heard all that about the football games during the fall, I think they said there could possibly be sixteen or something thereabouts. Okay, well, that would leave sixteen from sixty-five would be, what, forty-nine days during the spring? The, the commission should have set so many in the fall, so many in the spring, and that would come down way below sixty-five.
Gonna have to ask you to go ahead and wrap it up, sir.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I think I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Mr. Williams?
I think it would be beneficial, several times we've heard the discussion, or at least the question on, or comment on each side about the number, and maybe it would be beneficial that before we make a decision next week, that that calculation is provided, the sooner the better, how we got to sixty-five.
Are you talking about the number of seats?
Number of, no, number of, um, game, lighted nights.
That was.
Number of lighted nights. Just how did we get to that point?
Did y'all hear the question? Number of games, just to be specific. Any other questions before we, all right, I need a motion on the floor?
No, it's, uh, yes. I move to consider this appeal with a vote next Tuesday at ten-thirty.
So the motion is to lay this over for one week?
It's gonna be Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-fourth.
Remember that, it would be next Wednesday. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Just wanna make sure everybody understands that it not typically scheduled, routinely scheduled Tuesday meeting, that because we have some absences next week, we have decided to reschedule to Wednesday, same time, same place.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Madam President, when we come back with this, we, we're, we're just laying over the vote. We're not coming back with the appeal all over again. We're, we're laying over the vote on the appeal.
All parties understand.
You're correct, but this will be an agenda item, so people are able to sign in to speak to agenda items.
Yes, they can sign in, yes, right.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of laying this over for one week?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam President, under petitions and other communications, presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, I neglected to call John Burke, and he is, this is regarding ordinance zero, zero-two-zero-one-nine.
Mr. Burke?
Good morning. Well, now afternoon. John Burke, seventeen-seventy-five, Payke Avenue. I really wanted to speak on this issue, the mayor's proposal about the tickets and the drugs, and I would like him, the chief, to be here, so can y'all set that over or?
We are, I'll let you know that we are voting to table that.
Okay.
So we will not be voting on it today. There will be a public safety committee meeting coming up.
I'll announce that next week.
Mrs. Rich?
I would like to speak to the chief and the mayor and Mr. Barber all at once, so address there. Thank you very much.
All right, sir.
Good seeing you.
All right.
Resolutions, resolutions held over, zero-one-two-two-four.
What about this? This is another appeal.
Oh, we do have another pill. Okay. We have a request, request for waiver of noise ordinance on May twenty-seventh on Donald Street.
Somebody need a motion? Some move?
Some move.
Second.
All right, discussion? The noise waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over, zero-one-two-two-four. Zero-one-two-two-four, authorized agreement for the acceptance, processing of source-separated recyclables with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority.
Some move?
No, move to lay over.
Oh, yes.
We're gonna, we're gonna lay that one over, but at the date, I didn't bring my notes.
It is June twentieth.
June twentieth.
All right, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-two-twenty-five, authorized contract with AM Waste for the rental of equipment to collect and transport recyclables.
Move to lay over to June twentieth?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I was actually approached by a, a woman who represented, I guess it's Waste Management, and she wanted to meet with me. I told her that I knew that Solid Waste Authority and Waste Management were meeting. I plan on attending that meeting. I believe it's Friday. I don't have the exact time, but I think I might urge my other colleagues to attend if their time permits, to listen to that discussion about this process. And again, it's, I, unfortunately, I don't know what time, but it's in this building in the, the former pre-conference room on Friday. I think it's in the morning. I'll, I'll get that.
Jamie, what time is it? Do you know?
Madam President, it has been scheduled for Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At ten o'clock.
Okay, all right.
Oh, that's a conflict.
All right.
Thank you. In the old pre-conference rooms, right?
Old pre-conference room, okay.
Will that be recorded? Is, is that a public meeting?
It is a public meeting. There has been a public notice issued for that meeting, and they typically bring reporters to their meetings.
Okay, good, because maybe then we could review what transpired.
This, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dave's?
This is a meeting of the Solid Waste.
Solid Waste Authority with Waste Management, yes.
If, if I may cut a question.
Unless you're, unless we're gonna have a discussion with Mr. Bestie of this, we're...
Well, I was the one who bought it up.
Yeah, I was just...
I think it's a good thing, to be quite honest.
Simply asking a question as to when the meeting was, so I think that's basically it, and it is open to the public, I'm guessing, so anybody who wants to attend. All right? Ms. Lambert?
I got those two down.
All right, we need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-nine-two-seventy-three and zero-nine-two-seventy-four, reallocating monies from Parks and Recreation Administrative General Budget Professional and Technical to grant funds Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and reallocating monies from Capital Project Parks and Recreation Master Plan District Four and Capital Improvement Fund to grant fund Parks and Recreation Master Plan District Four.
So, second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-two-seventy-five, authorized contract with TerraCon Consultants for twenty-sixteen Pago County Commission District Two.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-one-two-seventy-six, reallocation of unused funds between eligible activities within a CDBG program in accordance with the Citizen Participation Plan for the funding of Section one-oh-eight loan repayment sidewalks on Houston Street to Berkeley Drive and sidewalks on Stone Court, Craft Court, and Dickens Street to Craft Highway.
Some move? Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Small?
Yes, this resolution that's in front of us is going to be placing some sidewalks on, in the Houston Street and in the Maesville community. I'm so happy that the administration, along with Mr. Roberts, that looked at this area to put down sidewalks, citizens in Maesville and really all across District Three is asking and begging for sidewalks, and I'm also gonna ask the administration for the next years to come if they will look into the CDBG program and look to find out ways that we can install sidewalks, not only just in the Maesville community, but in Dolphin Island Parkway in the Halls Mill, Neveco Road area. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, President.
Mr. Manzi?
Similar to Mr. Small's commentary, similar community, Stone Court, Craft Court, Dickens Street, right off of Craft Highway, a very mature community that have been advocating for sidewalks for a long time, and I'm happy that we're able to utilize these federal funds to go in and place these sidewalks. I'm appreciative to Mr. Roberts for all of his assistance in this effort, and I'm hopeful that one of the focuses, one of the continued focuses of our CDBG, while we do a myriad of other things, is the installation of sidewalks in much-needed communities. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, these are reallocation of unused funds for some eligible areas. CDBG is Community Development Block Grant Funds, so not all neighborhoods qualify for these, and these are unused funds from the last year's program, so just to clarify that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-seven-two-seventy-seven, authorized the mayor to accept a grant award in the amount of fifty thousand from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, State Lands Division for Parks and Recreation Master Plan, City Match fifty thousand.
Some move? Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-five-two-seventy-eight, authorized lease agreement for Cobalt Realty for approximately nine thousand square feet in Tillman's Corner Square Shopping Center for a period of fifteen years with option to renew for an additional five years.
Some move? Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I would just like to say that this is really our second precinct that used to be housed in with the fourth precinct at the museum. I guess it was the old Army or...
The Western, uh, Western administrative.
Yes, and it was a military facility, but given to the city. This will be the second precinct headquarters now in the Tillman's Corner area, but it's for better response time to the citizens that are still in the second precinct. To my knowledge, there's been no change in the borders, and so that's a portion of at least the district that I represent, which is south of Greelot, and therefore, a big portion of the district will be part of this second precinct and where it will be located. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Mr. Williams?
Briefly, first of all, I need to applaud the administration and all that worked on this project. It is a, a very good price as well as an awesome location. It may be the single biggest step that we have made to improve responsiveness and therefore public safety in, in the district, in District Six as well, and certainly in the precinct. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Richardson?
First, permanent precinct for the City Mobile. It's the third precinct. That was the most significant effort the city has made regarding precincts. Just wanna get that in. Mr. Second.
All right, anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, zero-two-zero-one-nine through thirty-four-zero-twenty-one.
Those are to be laid off for one, one week by council rules.
With the exception of zero-two, I thought we were tabling.
One-nine, are we kinda tabling?
Zero-two-zero-one-nine.
Right.
Yeah, we're gonna, we were gonna...
Then, we, a motion for the suspension of rules for me to consideration of zero-two-zero-one-nine.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now need a motion?
Yes.
Zero, zero-two-zero-one-nine, authorize certain criminal offenses to be charged by issuance of an Alabama uniform, non-traffic citation and complaint, not requiring custodial arrest and a court appearance if uncontested.
Rule to two.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolution's being introduced for the first time, twenty-seven-two-seventy-nine through fifty-eight-two-eighty-one.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for me to consideration of the resolution, twenty-seven-two-seventy-nine through fifty-eight-two-eighty-one.
Second, discussion?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven-two-seventy-nine, designate Leece C. Lambert, City Clerk, as Acting Chief Executive Officer of the City Mobile for the August twenty-second, twenty-seventeen municipal election and possible runoff.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Tough jobs, I need to do it. Twenty-seven-two-eighty, establish voting centers for the August twenty-second, twenty-seventeen municipal election.
Some move?
Second, discussion?
Yes, ma'am, just a second.
Mr. Williams?
First of all, I just, I just wanna thank Mary Ann and for the folks that worked with her. This sometimes appears to be just a process that just goes by without anybody noticing, in fact, lots of work, lots of coordination, and thank all those that host those voting places, because it's not always easy, and so the process and, and for their hosting us, I'm just very thankful. Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Small?
I'd also like to piggyback behind Councilman Williams, also thank you, Mary Ann. The last election that we had in the area, many citizens had contacted me in the Maesville community regards of the, the precinct, the voting precinct that they were voting at, the conditions that it was in. I want to let the citizens of Maesville know that this, that was a county election. It wasn't a city, but the city election will be held at the Saint Monica Catholic Church on Dolphin Island Parkway. Again, it would not be where the county election was. The upcoming election for the city will be held at the Saint Monica Catholic Church on Dolphin Island Parkway. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
I too want to thank Mary Ann Merchant and everybody in the clerk's office who's worked on this project, because it was really a labor of love to, to make sure that these sites are up and running. The thing that will be interesting is that we will have a statewide election that our governor has called for the week before, and you do not always vote in the same site for state or national or county elections, because you must reside not only in the district or have a, a location not only in the district, but in the precinct that you're assigned to. So there'll be, hopefully, a lot of education that will have to take place prior to our election, which will be on August twenty-second, and the state's election, I believe, is on the fifteenth, so they'll come first, but, so we'll need everyone paying attention, and we'll get the word out as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, Madam President, I wanted to know if Mary Ann is prepared to make an announcement regarding a change in voting places for District One, where the new place gonna be. Are you prepared now?
Those will be made officially once the notice of election is given July fifth.
Okay, all right.
They're, they're still working on some of them to make sure that we get the appropriate and the best places, but as my colleagues have mentioned, the Senate, US Senate election or the primary will be a week ahead of our municipal elections, and that is sure to cause some confusion, but we will do our best to get the word out about where and when to vote in the municipal election. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Fifty-eight-two-eighty-one, assessed cost for removal of weeds, group fifteen-twenty-four.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, twenty-one-two-eighty-two.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for me to consideration of the resolution twenty-one-two-eight-two.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one-two-eighty-two, authorized contract with Dobbs Sheet Metal and Roofing and Specialties for Michael Figures Park Community Center gutters, high gutters, downspouts, and wall repair.
So.
Second? Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, briefly, I would like to say, uh, this is a continuation of the progress being made at Figures Park. We're focusing on the building now, we're putting downspouts, uh, changing the roofing, and some other work at Figures Park, it's just a part of what we've been doing, uh, for a long time, so glad to see this happening, uh, in District One.
All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, thirty-one-two-eighty-three through forty-five-two-eighty-six.
Uh, those resolutions will be laid off for one week by council rules.
Announcements.
All right, announcements, uh, let's start with Mr. Richardson.
Well, it is a little late, but, uh, I would just like to say that on the fifteenth of June...
Then keep it short.
Yes, on the fifteenth of June, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be holding a, uh, community meeting in, uh, Trinity Garden. I, I wanted to, um, start a little early so that people would know that we are coming, we intend to have a, a great weekend, just real quick, I would just like to say that last week we broke ground for, for the Three Mountain Creek Greenway Initiative, it was just great, and, uh, we're looking forward for great things to happen over there, we have, happened over there, we have one, a challenge of getting across Dan Road, hopefully we can figure that out. We don't want the people on the Greenway to, to run into, uh, automobile traffic trying to get across the Greenway. Hopefully we can work that out, so everybody can keep moving. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Mrs. Rich?
Oh, thank you so much. On May twenty-seventh, I'll announce again, the, um, Mobile Pops will be out, that's Memorial Weekend, at, um, Medal of Honor Park in the Bicentennial Pavilion. This is a free concert, so, um, please, if you are in town and would like to really be entertained by that wonderful group, that will be at seven PM on May twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday. Look forward to seeing many people there. The District Six, um, Community Meeting will take place on June fifteenth at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, and it will begin at six-thirty. Um, we'll have guests of, um, the topic is public safety, and I've invited and so far accepted, Chief Batiste will be there, our Public Safety Director, James Barber, and our new Chief of our Fire Department, Chief Sealy, will be present, will do questions and answers, and also will introduce the Mobile's, um, I guess it's called the, um, Citizens Council on Public, uh, Police Advisory Council. I always get their name, I have something, I always mix that up.
Police Citizens Advisory.
Yeah, the advisory. It will not be one of their meetings where they'll go into any kind of hearings, but they will be introduced, and hopefully we'll have a date that we can give out to people of when they will be in the district, but it's an opportunity to meet those individuals, and they'll be probably, uh, their chair or perhaps a representative from District Six will give a little background about what that group does. And that, again, is on June fifteenth, which is a Thursday, at six-thirty, Connie Hudson Senior Center. Thank you.
Mr. Small?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. On, um, yesterday afternoon, I had a privilege, uh, giving the commencement, um, address at the B.C. Rain High School. Congratulations to all the twenty-seventeen graduates. I believe it was a hundred and seventy-six graduates from the B.C. Rain High School. Uh, very well attended, uh, at the graduation, and, um, it was very inspirational to give an inspirational message to the seniors. Again, I'd like to thank the principal and administration and staff and the students for inviting me out to give that inspirational message on yesterday afternoon at the Mitchell Center. And on tomorrow morning at nine o'clock AM, I will be attending the Miravale Elementary School Career Day. Uh, I will be, um, having two hats on as a funeral director and a politician, and, um, very excited about tomorrow at nine o'clock AM to, um, be with the students at the Miravale Elementary School off of Dolphin Island Parkway. Uh, remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daves.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Police Citizens Advisory Committee will meet in District Five, uh, a week, uh, tomorrow, tomorrow evening, uh, at, uh, the Catholic Social Services Building, which is located at one, one eighty-eight South Florida Street. Uh, the doors will open at five-thirty, the meeting will start at five-forty-five. This is fifteen minutes, excuse me, earlier than I had, uh, originally, I thought it was going to start at six, but it starts at five-forty-five. That's tomorrow night, one eighty-eight South Florida Street, Catholic Social Services. Uh, the annual law enforcement memorial service will be this Thursday, May eighteenth, at ten-thirty AM at Public Safety Memorial Park, twenty-three-oh-one Airport Boulevard. Wanted to let everybody out there know about that, everyone is welcome to attend. And then, uh, finally, our finance, the City Council Finance Committee will meet a week from tomorrow at two o'clock PM in order to review the latest, uh, financial statements from the City of Mobile with, uh, Mr. Wesh. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President, I just want, uh, focus on one key word for District Two, and that's progress. Every way you look, there is progress, from Plato to the Downey Bay, the Maysville, Tomanville, Church Street East, Lion Cof, Old Dolphin Way, progress, and that's what we want to continue to work toward, progress for all communities in our beautiful district. Uh, and one way we could make progress, continued progress, is moving the, uh, Cathedral, the Farmers Market from Monterreal Park back to Cathedral Square. The citizens are inundating me every weekend about this move and wanting it back in Cathedral Square. The senior citizens can't access Monterreal Park, the vendors are saying that nobody's buying, the, the restaurant owners are saying nobody's coming in to eat. I'm hopeful that the administration will consider as quickly as possible moving the Farmers Market back to Cathedral Square, and maybe come up with a whole nother market for Monterreal Park. But it's, it's pretty much the overwhelming sentiment of the vendors and those who utilize and patronize the market that they'd like to see it back at Cathedral Square. Um, and so I, I'm committed that I would make that statement today. No one from the administration is here, but I'm going to be true to my, well, with the, pardon me, Ms. Kessler, well, yeah, she knows what I mean. Ms. Kessler, I want you, I'm tasking you with delivering a message then. Uh, since you, I want you to deliver the message that the people want the Farmers Market back at Cathedral Square. They said that there's no shade at Monterreal Park, uh, the restaurants are not there, it's just not conducive for a, uh, a great Farmers Market experience. So I'm glad that Ms. Flo Kessler is here, uh, is, uh, envoy for the administration, I'm asking that you would deliver that message. Thank you, Madam President.
All righty, Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much.
Madam President, thank you very much. I, uh, I want to remind everyone that, that we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of decisions to make here, and, um, I ask that everybody take time to review the appeal, um, be prepared to, to, to vote on it next week. I, I have also asked both sides that, uh, for at least the consideration that we have heard the appeal, we have heard the argument for and against, and, uh, while our memories sometimes are short, they're not that short, um, but also, at the same time, rec- recognize that the rules of the council are that you may speak again. We just, uh, ask that unless it's something absolutely new, that respect the time with the council and allow us to, uh, continue with the business next week. Thank you.